Good evening, and welcome to the Monday, November twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three Winchester Select Board Meeting. I'm Rich Mucci, Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening, Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members John Fallon, Michelle Pryor, and Michael Betancourt, and seated next to me is Town Manager Beth Rudolph. If you're watching this meeting, please stop and go downtown and shop for Midnight Madness. You can tape the meeting, the meeting gets taped, you can view it on YouTube at any time, but go help our local merchants. It's a big week for them and support all our local merchants as they have some great stuff going on downtown tonight. So, please shop local this season and help our merchants. With that, we can start, I'm gonna start with Eversource. Guys, right off the bat, come on up. We'll get you out so you can go spend some money at our local shops. Thank you all for coming in. You know, I thought it would be good to have you all come in. We've gotten some complaints from various neighbors about, you know, working into this late into the season, you know, what's the plan for winter, some complaints about sidewalks, poles and sidewalks, reopening areas that we thought you were done with. So, I thought I'd bring you in, give us an update of where we're at, where we're headed, and then open it up to the board for some questions and some follow-up.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us another time. So, I would like to start by apologizing for the other day because I think that's on Eversource and McCord. We should have called the town, let them know that we're paving, and that temporary closure was just because of paving. You know, if it's just hot mix, we just laid down, we cannot just let people drive on it. You have to give it like hours before they can exit that area. So, that's on us. We should have communicated better with the town, so we didn't have that miscommunication about, you know, wood closure. As far as work right now, civil work is basically completed. This week, we're finalizing the bypass around manhole four oh five, restoring water to people's house. By Saturday, four oh five should be all complete and paved. That's what McCord promised Eversource, so that's where we are right now. And by the end of next week, we should be completing with all our splicing going into the first week of, first, second week of December.
So, that's, that's when you'll start pulling the cable?
Yes.
Okay. And how long is that process gonna take?
Uh, for manhole, two, three, four, five. We already completed seven. I think it's gonna take roughly two weeks, based on what the contractor is proposing right now.
And that just involves having a vehicle?
It's just a vehicle, a small closure, yes, over the manhole and just pull.
Two manholes at a time?
Yes. It's not as intrusive as our civil work.
And Beth, on the town side, do we have someone that's, I mean, I know DPW's been out there daily, not hourly sometimes. Just making sure that from a punch list standpoint, the repairs being made for winter and...
So, I think you have a sidewalk this week with DPW and engineering?
You can count on DPW, they've been doing a, they've been doing a great job at keeping us accountable for their own punch lists as, you know, water, when it comes to water, restoration, sidewalks, and they're on it, and we're working with them to trying to, you know, address these as soon as possible.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause a lot of the complaints we get are people that can't pass on sidewalks or poles or, you know, pavement that's just, you know, disjointed or things like that.
We just had the conversation with McCord this afternoon. The goal is to get out of the street, come in and do all the necessary repair. The temporary, we call them temporary repair because we're coming back in the spring to do a full restoration, but we wanna leave it in a practical way that people can just cross the street or walk their dog.
Yeah. Okay. So, I think there's just some concern about members in the community about just the passability of some areas, especially as we get towards some of the treacherous winter weather, and it gets dark earlier, things like that. So, I'm sure DPW will stay on you, but, you know, go a long way to helping us if you can get that done. It looked like down by the veterinarian building, you had that paved over, and then it kind of opened back up with metal plates. Was there an issue there or...?
It's closed back up now. There was, there was, that area was pretty rough, so we did a minor mill in pavement, and we just had to, we had to open it back up to get the handle in. That's still just a temporary repair. It is, it is closed back up. I think the plates are off. I just drove it before this. So, in the spring, that'll be a full mill and pave, so you won't see that, that patch.
Basically, it was done and the DPW did like the quality of it, the temporary fix, so we came back and milled it down to redo it.
Okay.
So, I think we'll be out there as long as Bob and his team need us touching up punch list and stuff into December. Those aren't major work zones. You're talking about, you know, a sidewalk panel here or, you know, smoothing out some asphalt, you know, where they want. So, it shouldn't be a major disruption like, like the project has been.
When's the sidewalk with DPW?
It's usually Thursdays at nine thirty.
Yes.
I had some concerns from residents about vehicles parking on the sidewalk, so making it harder to navigate. So, if you could just make sure that your construction vehicles, obviously, there's times when you're working and, you know, there's no choice, but just have the workers in the morning, if they're waiting, just make sure they're not parked over the sidewalk.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions?
I know that there was some concerns about also in sort of parking vehicles parked on the sightlines around intersections. So, I don't know, it seems like that maybe that's been lessened recently.
I can bring it up with the guys tomorrow and make sure no one pays attention to where you're parking. We'll make it the safety talk.
So, if I understand you, after this, by Saturday, you should be done with all the manhole work?
Yes, the civil work.
Civil, sorry, what?
Civil work.
What's civil work?
Well, it's basically all the construction that McCord has been doing and like installing the manhole and backfilling.
And the water, they have the water bypass, they'll be pulling all that out.
The biggest thing, I wanna get your water bypass off and get back on the new main that we installed, just so that we can get that, because that's, you know...
So, by the end of the week, that's gonna be done?
Yes, with one minor, well, no, no, I just wanna be, I just wanna be clear about it. So, I spoke to McCord, that wasn't Trevor, that was Steve. Steve is the field person, and Steve was saying we have a water resort that's coming Wednesday, so they have to review it to make sure that the water is in good condition to make, before they can push it to, to, to the residence house. So, if we have good water, by Saturday, everything should be all set.
We haven't had any of the bypasses, you know, the new lines failed to date, but obviously, if it does, then we've gotta reflush it, rechlorinate it, and retest it.
So, that might push it a couple day if it happened.
Okay. And then you'll start the splicing work next week?
Yes.
Okay, and that should take two weeks?
Yes.
And then you're done for the season?
Yes.
Okay. So, by mid-December, you'll be off the roads theoretically? That's the goal. And then only in the spring come back to do restoration work?
Restoration in the street, the parks.
Okay. All right. Any questions? All right, well, thank you. We'll continue to work with you. Does anyone from Eversource here know about the other project, the one ten line? I mean, was there work today being done on that, do you know?
Mr. Cooper?
Yeah.
There was like some minor cable pulling and splicing maybe, was that in the vacant street?
All right. Do you know, I mean, is that done at this point? I mean, just, I guess...
My understanding is it's done, but I can, if there's a question, I can ask them.
Okay, can you, yeah, can you provide an update and writing? Because they were there today, had the same detours set up that they had at the original project, you know, for the cable pulling. So, I don't know if they're back again for some reason. I thought we were done.
I can, I'll follow up with the project manager and shoot you an email with an update.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a copy here too.
Yep, absolutely.
That'd be helpful. We just wanna know how long that's gonna go on for.
Sure thing.
All right. Thank you, guys, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and take it for our patience.
All right, we got five minutes before our public hearings can start, so why don't we go and do the acceptance of donations?
Move that we accept with gratitude a grant of three thousand six hundred dollars from the Enca Society to the Winchester Coalition for a Safer Community to purchase two aggressor suits for rape aggression defense training.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude a donation of thirteen thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents from Christensen and the former Winchester Youth Wrestling account for the Winchester Recreation Youth Wrestling Program.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for those donations. Beth, you wanna do your town manager's report?
Sure. So, just a few things I wanted to mention. First, as we talked about at the meeting last week, we have posted for the resident large positions on the Housing Production Plan Working Group. So, anybody who's interested in that, I'd encourage you to go to the town's website. You can find the application there, and you can return a copy of it to townmanager@winchester.us. Or if you can't find the application, please reach out to us directly and we'd be happy to discuss it with you. We've asked for the applications to be returned by Wednesday, December sixth, and the board will be reviewing those at your meeting on December eleventh.
Great.
I just wanted to mention the town is doing, as part of our communications plan, we are currently, we do have an online survey that we are out looking to get feedback from residents and board and committee members. That information is also posted on the town's website. It's the Talk to the Town online survey. That survey will be open until December eighth, so I would just encourage anybody who wants to provide feedback to town on ways that we can communicate better with our residents or our businesses, please complete that survey. We'd be more, very much welcome your input. Just a reminder, I think I mentioned this last week, as the all-night parking ban is going to affect, the police will be out issuing warnings, and those will quickly move into real tickets if we don't, if your car's still on the, on the street. Again, the, as I mentioned last week, the town clerk's office is looking for election workers to work in the two thousand and twenty-four election cycle. It's a very, very busy election cycle, so we could use any volunteers there. You can reach out to the town clerk's office, or you can visit the town's website to apply. And then, construction updates, obviously, you just heard what's going on with Eversource. Very pleased to report that the Lake Street Bridge reopened right before Thanksgiving, so it was a nice holiday weekend with two-way traffic on that bridge. Probably won't last very long. Our contractor still has work to do out there to finish the project up. The project, the bridge will be open at the end of each workday, but will probably go down to one lane of traffic for some portion of the next few weeks while they finish up their work. And I think that's really all I have. Just, we will be out starting work on the Cross Street Bridge in the coming weeks. That work was already funded at town meeting. It will be, it's not, it's more of a under-carriage improvements and wing wall improvements to the bridge, so there won't be much that you'll see on the surface and should not be as disruptive as some of the other work that we've had going on. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Any questions for Beth?
I've had one question about the transfer station. I don't know if we could answer last week on the license plate readers, where we are with that.
Yeah, so we are working with the vendor to get that. The idea is that we'll have that up and running for the new cycle.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we're still working out the timing. We'll probably have the notices go out sometime in mid-January, so that when people start, start replying, we'll have that all set up with the online payment and the license plate reader system.
One of the things that I noticed, just as a user at the transfer station, was that we have a lane blocked off that's right adjacent to the recycling, and then kind of two lanes that are kind of, you know, right next to each other. I thought when we had designed it, it was more one lane closer to the units and space in the middle, and then another lane, you know, so there, it would be easy to...
So, I think the idea was that there's four lanes, all which go straight through to the, like, you can just drive.
To the belt?
To the...
That's what I thought too, but it doesn't seem like you can go from the interior, you have to wait.
Right now, there's temporary fencing up because they're waiting to put the railings on the concrete, so that might be impeding one of those through lanes.
Over that way and then...
So, that, that, that first lane will not, there'll be no parking where it's striped down, there's like cones. There won't be any parking in that area.
Okay.
There won't be any, you can't stop there to take your recycling out.
Right. Okay. And that small little building that we have there in front, is that going to remain there as well?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yep.
It just still seems like it's difficult to kind of get around, and it just like traffic backs up because people then will have to wait till the front person gets out on the outside, so the person on the inside can then get out to have people backfill. So, it just seems like it's one of the problems that we try to design around not having again. You know, it just seems like it's almost worse in a way, so, just from a user's perspective, so, I don't know.
Maybe with the temporary fencing standard, it would be better, but I'd have to see it. I can't remember.
Yeah.
I know what you're talking about. The house is right...
Yeah.
There.
Yeah, and I thought we tended that to be like, kind of, we drive right through that thing, so, but it's fine. We'll, we'll see how it goes.
Anything else? All right. Moving on, Willie, it is seven forty-five. We'll start our first public hearing, which is the Eversource granted location at Ravenscroft, Ravenscroft, excuse me. Where are you? Matt?
Good evening. Jackie, Debbie, Eversource, N-Star Electric, DBA, Eversource Energy respectfully request a grant of location for the installation of one new J O pole on Ravenscroft Road. The purpose of this pole is the installation to serve the customer at two Ravenscroft Road without crossing a neighboring property.
All right. Matt, anything to add?
Engineering has no comments.
Okay. Is anyone here from the public that wishes to be heard on this Eversource granted location on Ravenscroft? All right. Seeing no one, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Any discussion or questions by any board members?
I have a question. So, is that common to install another pole just to so someone's power line doesn't traverse another's property?
Sometimes if it's crossing over, they'll make us move, they'll make us move it, so it's, we'll not cross the person's property.
It's been this way for a long time though, right? It's been this way for a long time, right?
Yes, but it's like, we have it all the time that people say they don't want the wires going across to serve the other people. They all, they just don't want it.
Yeah.
Which is their right.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right. Hearing nothing. If there's a motion, you can consider it.
Move that we approve the Eversource granted location for Ravenscroft Road to install a new utility pole within the public right-of-way to provide services to the residents at two Ravenscroft Road without encroaching on abutting properties.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How about goings?
You too. Our next public hearing has to do with the Washington Hancock, as it knows as the Washington Hancock Traffic Hearing. I think, Matt, you're gonna lead this hearing. So, the way we'll do this is we'll have a presentation from our town engineer, Matt Sherman, and then, Schuman, excuse me, and then we'll open it up to public comment afterwards. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. This is a request that was made to the TRC from a resident at the corner of Washington Street and Hancock Street for additional parking regulations along their frontage. Sorry. Along their frontage on Hancock Street. Just to give you a sense of where Hancock Street is, it's in between Washington Street and Highland Ave, and there's a variety of mainly single-family houses on Hancock Street, some two-family houses on Washington Street, and a condo complex at the corner of Washington and Hancock as well. This is the existing conditions. I, you know, reviewing it at our TRC meeting, there has been a history of cars blocking the driveway as well as the hydrant there, as you can see in the photo on the left. So, the DPW had gone and already hatched out an area for no parking. That area that's hatched out, state law says that there's no parking allowed ten feet from a hydrant and twenty feet from a crosswalk. So, this did not go before the Select Board because it's just reinforcing state law. It's not a new regulation. I also wanna point out on the right, right side, from Washington Street going up just past the first driveway to the second driveway on the right, there's also a no-parking regulation that is existing. This is just some photos that the resident had provided us. I understand there was also some, some correspondence... I understand there was also some, some correspondence to the select board, I think over the weekend or today, with additional information, but basically just showing the situation that's come up. And as I noted, the police department has received calls at this location, both in terms of the fire hydrant, but also blocking the driveway, which, you know, creates a public safety issue. So staff went out and reviewed the situation, and I think this is a pretty good, this photo is a pretty good illustration of, you know, probably how people normally park if they're not trying to sneak a third car in there. So our recommendation was to post an additional no parking here to driveway sign roughly six feet from the existing driveway. The rationale for that is that it provides enough room for two cars to comfortably park in that area in between the existing hatch no parking area towards Washington Street and then the, the new regulation. So that would allow two cars to park there. I think that's really, that's, that's it.
Any questions from any board members from Matt?
I have a couple of questions. Can you go back to the other photo you had of the intersection there? Yes, this one here. So this is a crosswalk here?
That is a crosswalk.
Okay.
Even though it's not marked, it is a crosswalk.
So are we going to fix all of that there? Because I mean, even if we paint lines on it, it's not, it doesn't look terribly safe to be walking, I mean...
Well, there's no requirement that a crosswalk be marked. It's always a good idea. It does enhance pedestrian safety, so that's something I could talk to DPW about. It's probably a similar situation going up and down Washington Street, I would imagine.
Looks like there might have been one there. I don't know.
Well, I know there are residents here, they may have a better sense, you know, when, when it's opened up for public comment. They may have additional background. I didn't observe one there, but you're right, it may have been faded.
Yeah, just, just when we're, you know, looking at an area like this, that seems like somewhat of an easy fix for us to repaint or even, you know, fix some of that there, kind of the apron to the street. And in the other piece with the, I'm fine with both of the hatch areas there, the lines from the front and, and back. And, you know, I'm not, I don't know that we necessarily need a, a sign there that says no parking near the corner, if it says no parking on the ground, maybe in the winter, I don't know. It just, sometimes it just seems like we put signs everywhere and it seems like the paint can...
Yeah. I think in this instance, me, you know, I, I felt exactly the same way you felt until I saw the, the photos that the abutter had sent, which showed the snow conditions and signs not visible, so I would recommend them.
And I've got a question. So the, the striping by the hydrant, that's not, that distance is the distance, right? That's not extending?
Yeah, we measured it. It's roughly 10 feet from the hydrant, and the hydrant is certainly less than 20 feet from the intersection, what we would consider the crosswalk.
Matt, have you talked to the abutter about your recommendation?
I've not directly spoken to the abutter, but the town manager's office did reach out to them. They've contacted both us and the, and the police department, so they were notified of what the recommendation was.
And did they have any feedback on that? I mean, I know we got an email, but I didn't know.
I haven't heard any additional feedback.
So the other thing that I've just noticed in looking at this now, and I'm not familiar with it to say, but, you know, we have the, where the curb comes down, the street there, we have the strip there for the visually impaired, right?
The tactile strips.
Yep.
And I don't see it on the other side. I, I don't know if it's not there. It looks like it's...
It is in a different view. It's a little further back.
Closer to the mall.
You can see it by the wall.
It's right above the PA and no parking on the left.
Okay. Is that how it's usually done, or...
So I, you know, I was reviewing this under the purview of the parking regulations, so I didn't inspect whether the handicap ramps are compliant based on current regulations. I would presume that when they were installed, that they were installed the current, the then-current regulations?
Yeah, so all of that was when Washington Street was reconstructed in the early 2000s. Mass dot put in all those ramps and the tactile warning strips, which at the time did meet the ADA, you know, were ADA compliant. I'm not sure if there's been changes since that time, but...
And I don't know, I'm just looking at it here, and it just seems like they're in kind of different spaces, and it seems like it's, you know, I wouldn't say how that crosswalk is there, it's not really acceptable as far as inviting people, especially that are visually impaired, to cross the street right there. Seems, seems dicey.
Yeah, I mean, I could look at that with DPW. That does seem like a, you know, again, I was looking at this at the purview of the park, of parking.
No, no, I'm not being critical, I'm more just looking at the big picture. I agree with all your assessment everywhere else, and I agree with you, so...
Questions for Matt? Anyone else?
I just, if there's an opportunity in, in repainting the top to block that off, and the crosswalk could be repainted at the same time, that would be helpful. The only other question in terms of paint would be, if that's kind of designating as two parking spots, does it make sense to add the, the little parking spot T or just to, to leave as is, to kind of really indicate that the two cars fit here and, and don't try and squish extras?
We had discussed that, and we, there was a variety of opinions, but I think the general sense was that it wasn't necessary to, to mark the tick. We call them ticks or the little Ts, and those do tend to fade more quickly than others.
Okay. At this point, I'd open it up to public comment on this issue. So if, if there's anyone here that wishes to be heard, I'd ask you to raise your hand. You'll come up to the table, you'll state your name and address, and I'd recognize you for up to three minutes, public comment. So if you're here on this issue, sir, you're in the back, you can come on up.
My name is Jeremy Elliott. I live at 247 Washington Street, so right there in those condos. Okay. Is that better?
Yep.
On any given day, like 50% of the time, you'll probably find one of my two cars right there in that spot, so I'm happy to be able to talk to you today on this issue. I would like to offer the fact that if there's going to be any type of, you know, something done here, that we are consistent with whatever we're doing. Because if you put a new parking sign right in front of somebody's driveway, then why not put one in front of everybody's, right? So I would like to offer at the end of my little speech, a solution that can make everybody happy and also be consistent with what we're, we're doing here. First, point out those condos over there. There's 30 units and 32 parking spaces. So as far as, I mean, these obviously have been zoning laws, I think minimum, you need 1.25 or 1.5 depending on where you're at. So this has been grandfathered in. So you wonder, okay, where are the rest of the cars parking? Well, the rest of the cars, for anybody who has an extra car and doesn't know where to put it, it's going to put it right there, right where we're talking about. That's the closest spot. And why is it the closest spot? Because there's no parking on that side, on the other side of Hancock Street. I want to talk about that for a second. Hancock Street is not a wide street. It has room for about three, three, three widths, car widths. If you have people parking on both sides of the street, you're not going to have room for two cars going through. So I'm assuming that's why we have no parking on one side of Hancock Street, simply because everybody who had a car in, you know, the condos wanted to park there, and so they got rid of that, so we wouldn't have parking on both sides of the street. There's nowhere else on any of these streets going from Washington to Highland that have no parking anywhere on them. It's only this one spot here on Hancock. So what I would suggest overall is what we could do, you can, instead of having no parking on that side, since we kind of need it anyway, push it to the other side and let people park on the side close to condos. And that gets rid of all this arguing over, you know, nobody should be parking in front of me, because that's what's really going on here. I would rather park my car anywhere else besides right there. I don't have a choice. My car has been keyed, it has been egged twice, my neighbor's cars have been egged, hers has been egged, another neighbor who lives in unit 13 has been egged. And this is simply because the neighbors don't like us parking there, we don't have anywhere else to park. Are there any questions?
So I guess my question is, so we're acknowledging that you can park cars there, but we're saying that, you know, according to town engineer, legally, two cars would fit there. Is that what I'm hearing correctly, without blocking a driveway?
It's correct.
Correct. We, we only parked two cars there. After, especially after that stripe went in, there's only two cars that parked there.
We've gotten pictures from the abutter that shows cars blocking her driveway, so maybe they're just not fitting incorrectly, so the idea here is to fit them in.
I don't know what, I, I recognize whose that was. It's not, that's unit six's van. He doesn't actually speak English very well, and when I've tried to talk to him about some of the rules, because he's gotten parking tickets and I can't even explain to him why he's gotten the parking tickets. So for that particular person, it might just be a communication issue. I don't think he's trying to be mean or anything, it's just that in, in that particular case, he, of course, should not have parked the way he did. But it's not something, it's not something that's happening every day, it's not really an issue. I have never seen, I mean, it might have been a one-off thing as far as I can tell, because in general, nobody parks like that in front of a driveway.
Okay. Thank you. Who's next? Here in the front?
Yeah, I'd like to go first.
Come on up. The, the other thing I'll mention is if, if a lot of you have the same, similar comment, you can have a spokesperson speak for all of you if you have similar comment, if you'd want.
Hi, I'm Judy Sinclair. I am representing Lisa DeMaro, who is the abutter. The Washington Street address, I don't know what her address is. Anyway, she's away, and I live across the street, I actually live in one of the condos there. But I have a single car, so it's a non-issue for me. But what happened was, just a quick background, is when Lisa first brought this up, one day a no parking sign showed up, and it would just showed up and all three parking spaces were taken. And you couldn't park from her driveway to the corner. And that's, that's what started this whole thing, when that went up without any notification at all. So I wrote to the town manager, made several phone calls, and then shortly thereafter the sign came down, and here we have the meeting. So I'm here to represent Lisa. Lisa is in agreement with doing it from the tree to the, the space that you outlined, because then at least it leaves you, it leaves us, the neighborhood, two spots for the neighborhood to park in, two legal spots. So, and I live in the neighborhood, I'm in agreement with that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
In the back, come on up.
Hi, this is Aisha Gulbigich. I'm also living at the condos on the other side, and I agree with Jeremy, and I'm one of the neighbors that who egg and get nasty notes about not parking there. And I, we have one car, so I don't usually park there, but I have small kids, sometimes we need to carry them. So this was closer to our house, so we park over there. And I agree with Jeremy that after that, the not here, the corner drawings, I think, I never see three parked, parked there. So to be honest, I don't see this sign and this will do anything good to community, it's just for that house over there, so. But I agree with you guys that the crosswalk should be painted, and that will be good for us to use. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Bee Bishop, and I'm at 8 Hancock Street. So I'm a resident that's in one of the homes directly across from the condos. We moved into the neighborhood officially in April, and since that time, we've had our own driveway blocked as well, and we're directly across from where the entrance is for one of the, for the parking lot of the condos. We've had to leave messages as well on the cars, and they've never been nasty, we just try to remind them not to block our driveway. We've had to call the police. We have not asked them to ticket it, but we wanted to make it noted that there is an issue with the parking. And then directly across from our driveway is a no parking on the other side of the road, but multiple times, cars will park there, and we can't get our car out. We can't literally back up and move, and so it has become like notably an issue, and I was really glad that this got brought up. However, we find a proper solution, I think we can definitely assess what will be the most effective, whether we do move the parking on the other side, where there are far less houses on that side of the road versus on the other side that our house is on. But something that I had thought of, that I had, used to live in Arlington, and they actually have the law where you're not allowed to overnight park from 1:00 AM to 7:00 AM. And I researched in Winchester that we actually have that law as well in effect, but there's nothing that notes that on our street, and I feel like that would make sure at least people can have access to their driveways in the evening. Now, why are they allowed to have a condo with only 32 parking spots and 30 units? That's questionable. My other concern is that at Swanton and Washington Street, there's going to be a new development with multiple apartments, and my concern is that the parking limitations will only increase and that more people will be finding parking on our street, and we already are having an issue with the parking. So that's why I would want to like push for that overnight parking not to be allowed. But again, I think, I hadn't considered it, and I'm glad that someone from the condo had pointed out that maybe moving parking to the other side might be more effective, if there can be assessment of how many cars could practically fit on one side of the other road. But it is a narrow road, and I think we do have some issues here that I trust you guys will make the best call. Thanks for listening to me.
Matt, can you pull up the map of the houses? Can you show where your house is in terms of...
So we are number 8 Hancock, directly from where there's an entrance. I think it would also help if they made a one-way entrance for this, because it's confusing if cars are coming in or out, but they made a one-way entrance from here and exit. We know exactly if cars are coming in or out.
Matt, I know you've only been here for half a minute in town, but, I mean, has anyone looked at parking on the other side of the street?
To be honest, we didn't look at that in detail. My, my initial concern would be that the residents are going to have trouble backing out of the driveways now, since the street is narrow. Probably would get more parking on that side, but I think you're going to end up with the same concerns, or similar concerns.
Come on up, sir.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
So my name's George Gazazian, thank you for your time tonight, I appreciate it. I'm in here in favor of Lisa DeMaro as well. I live at 29 Coolidge Road. I used to live on the corner of Harvard and Washington Street, at 356 Washington Street. I had a driveway on the side of the house as well. So this is something that I kind of lived with as well, a similar situation. Another problem we had with, besides blocking the driveway, is also the safety of backing out and having that a blatant driveway. I know firsthand, being actually friends with Lisa picking up the trash, that backing out when the cars are even parked within a foot or two, never mind blocking it, it's extremely difficult and extremely dangerous backing out. I've had similar situations when I used to live on Washington Street and my driveway was on the corner. Now, there is a sign, I, I don't know how long it's been there, but it's been there a very long time, no parking from the corner of Harvard up till it meets Washington Street at the main street. I also work in town at Kokobodakins. It's also on the corner of Main Street and Clark, another similar situation. We have a bay door. There's a no parking sign there. I think that it's very easily, this could be a no parking on that whole side. I think that with the situation in the grandfathered-in condos, I think this is a good medium where they have the sign and she gets six feet to her driveway. And that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time again, I appreciate it.
Thanks. Well, sir.
My name is Joe Spano. I'm not a resident, I'm here actually representing Lisa, who brought the issue to the board. And question had come up earlier from the town engineer as to whether, I think you actually raised a question, as to whether the abutter, Lisa, had actually approved of the proposal, and she actually has. She does agree with this as an approach to solve the parking issue with respect to proximity to her driveway. Some of the other points, I won't be redone in here, but one, one other point I do, would like to make, it was mentioned earlier that the winter parking ban is going to, going into effect. The winter conditions actually exacerbate the parking issues that are being discussed. When plows come down the street, come down Hancock, cars being very close to the mouth of the driveway... the mouth of the driveway ends up leaving piles of snow at the foot of the driveway. And frankly, I can bear witness to this because on a couple of occasions, I've actually cleared it for her. Uh, so as a result, I think uh, there's a number of other issues aside from the proximity to driveway that come into play, particularly given the winter conditions. Uh, part of the problem, uh, as was noted in the letter that I actually had forwarded to you all uh, from Lisa uh, earlier today, uh, indicated that the no parking ban uh, doesn't, the, isn't a very strong enforcement of the no parking ban, uh, the overnight parking or even particularly uh, during winter storm conditions on Hancock Street, which again exacerbate this particular issue. So uh, I would hope, would like to see that you do take into account of what are some of the larger issues that are really uh, stemming off of this particular parking issue.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? Come on up.
Um, my name is Paimon Spang and I live at six Hancock Street. And I, my driveway immediately abuts Lisa DiMaro's driveway. I tried to print pictures, but um, I, I couldn't get my printer to work tonight. So I have a photo on my phone. I don't know if you're interested in seeing it, but I could show you that. Um, the parking problems are a common occurrence for all of us on that, that end of Hancock Street. Um, and the first fellow that spoke up and sat here and said that he has two additional cars and you know, he has to park them somewhere. The main problem with that is he parks them there for consecutive days. For example, tonight, um, at least through five-thirty, his car and his son's car were parked back-to-back since Wednesday, um, the twenty-second. The cars haven't moved and the cars have been there for days. There was another vehicle that had been parked there um, for a month. A silver Nissan. And I've noted this all in my, my um, my record here with the license plate numbers and everything for people's reference. But it was parked there for a month. And we're there and, and the fellow that, as I said, spoke first is notoriously parking two cars, sometimes right in front of my house at six Hancock. And I pull up or maybe a guest or something and, and you know, it's totally understandable. We live on a public street and cars come and go. But it's not an extension of the parking for the condominium complex and that's what it's become. I've lived in this house for twenty-seven years and I've seen it become a major, major issue. I've also grown older during this time as well as my husband, obviously. And it's become very, very hard for us and especially in the winter months when uh, cars are parked and allowed to stay there. And as the last speaker said, the um, snowplow will come down as far as they can on Hancock. When they come to the spot where there are parked cars, they have to go around them. And when they come back in, it all lands at the end of my driveway and Lisa's driveway. So, and it's become increasingly more difficult for us to clear that snow. Um, I, I can tell you there were multiple times that the town snowplow driver would stop and come up to our house over the years and knock on the door and say, could you please move the cars? And at which point we inform them they're not our cars, you know? So it's been an ongoing problem. Um, you know, we realize that it's um, parking is for all residents, but it's not for individuals to decide that that's where they're gonna put their cars and leave them for a week. Two cars back-to-back, takes away so much parking for any visitors that we have. I have four children and they have small children. If, um, we have parking in our driveway for two cars and um, it's very, very tight. And I, I wish I had the pictures that I could show you, but I could certainly email them to the board. Um, you know, when I approached the, the first speaker's son one evening and said, please, you can't park here for days and days. And I know that that's your father's car too. And his response to me was, you have a driveway, use it. Now, I just think that's very um, rude and irresponsible of, you know, we're in a community. We all have to get along. And I think that it's become um, very, very hard to, to deal with. Um, not only that, when they sell units at the condominium complex, they often say, plenty of on-street parking, okay? That to me encourages people to buy and say, oh yes, I can park on the street whenever I want and leave my car for days. It, it's, especially for us, where there's only parking on one side as was previously discussed. Um, you know, what are we supposed to do if we don't have a, a spot in our driveway? And there's no other, the, the, it's not only that one individual, although it's quite frequent. Um, but you know, the whole street is full of these cars that don't move. And even to come out of my house, I take the train, walk, going to cross the street. One morning I came out, I looked up, I didn't see anything. I took two steps from behind parked cars and was almost struck by a vehicle that was coming down from Highland Ave. So um, it's become very difficult. Um, I'm, I'm wondering if you're going to place that kind of signage at the end of Lisa DiMaro's driveway? Could I possibly also have that type of signage at the end of my driveway? My driveway is so much more narrow and um, Lisa has at least parking for four cars. I have a very narrow driveway that if you get out, you, you almost, unless you park perfectly, you can't get out and be able to put your feet down. It's, you know, it's not the kind of driveway where um, we can fit multiple cars easily and um, over the years, the parking on the street has become much worse. And as previously stated, the, the snow emergency parking is allowed to happen where um, the town does nothing, the police don't ticket. Um, and, and any suggestion made, I, at one point approached the board at the condos and had asked a friend who's a member to please let them know or make it clear to the people that live there. And a lot of them are no longer owners, so I don't think they really have a stake in what's happening. Um, and their response to me was, um, we don't deal with resident issues. Well, they are not an island within the town that can operate under their own rules, you know? They have to also abide by the town bylaws. And there is a bylaw that states that you cannot um, overnight park or park during a snow emergency. And that's not being complied with by anyone, you know? I've had multiple conversations with Sergeant Bachelor and he was at my house today. And he agreed that there's a major problem. Um, he felt that maybe that sign, the same sign that may be at the end of Lisa's driveway at least, would give us enough si- line of sight so that we could see what's coming down the hill, you know, or coming up.
Thank you ma'am.
And uh, I'm not done yet.
Okay. You had three minutes and your three minutes are up.
Oh, my three minutes are up. All right. Well, I'd like to submit this as part of the record if it's possible to do that.
That's fine. We'll take it. Thank you.
No, could I get that to you please? Thank you. And I can, if uh, is an address, I can email the photos that I was unable to.
Send them to the town manager's email address or?
No, I have that.
Our email addresses are.
I have that already. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment in this portion of the hearing. So I think we've heard a lot of concerns. Um, you know, we're here only to discuss the recommendations put forth tonight. But clearly there might be some wide, wider spread issues there. And maybe Beth, you can follow up with the chief about enforcement of the overnight parking ban, especially in the winter. Um, and Matt, maybe you can look into these other issues that some of the other neighbors are raising about their own driveways. Uh, cause seems to be some type of um, you know, additional issues in that area uh, with cars parking for long periods of time. So any discussion or thoughts about the recommendations that we have for the board tonight?
Well, just before we implement or agree to go over this um, solution, can we look at more global context? See what other towns are doing to address this? This isn't the first time this has happened. Or we spend a fortunate tool or get their opinion or someone else versus just keep doing it on an ad hoc basis? It's gotta be a better way. And then we have, you know, as we do with so many things in town, we have a policy. And to Mike's point, like, I, you know, signs just become wallpaper. You get so many signs. So is that gonna be the most effective way to address this, Matt? You know, and so?
Well, I think it's part of that has to do with, you know, enforcement.
I agree. I mean, believe me, I, if you stand down here, you see a hundred cars go through red lights and there's never a ticket given. So you don't want to get me going on the enforcement thing?
Just putting the enforcement issue aside, we did as TRC have this very same discussion of, you know, what, what are the criteria for putting these signs up? Cause you know, I was pointing out to me that there are a couple of locations in town that have them, but we, yeah, we can't put them in front of every driveway everywhere in town. And I think, I think the sense of the com- uh, committee was that, you know, we have documentation from the resident and through the police department and police reports that kind of make this situation different than say, you know, other driveways. And that's kind of what led us in th- this direction versus, you know, a different direction.
Other thoughts or questions?
So that sounds like it's, it's more of an enforcement thing than a sign thing. Cause we can have signs, but then we don't enforce the signs.
So there's no, currently there's, there, there, originally there was no.
Overnight parking, that's what I'm talking about.
For the overnight piece, correct? Yes.
Matt, did we um, look at this street for, you know, high speed or high volume at all? Um, and I know that wasn't the scope necessarily of, you know, your um, your purview here. But um, I, I just, you know, we, we have talked about in the past um, staggering the sides of streets um, with parking um, for, as a traffic calming measure. So I know that was suggested here as a, as a parking solution, but we've also looked at it as a traffic calming measure. And I don't, I don't know if that, if this tends to be a cut-through street, if there's high speeds. It looks like it's, you know, you know, looking at the street, it's pretty, pretty easy to go fast, you know, along that side of the street that, and I, I don't know that's a problem or not. It just was.
So we didn't do any traffic counts, you know, speed counts. Um, I would say at, once you get past the condos, although the parking demand is less, you can park on either side of the street.
Oh, okay.
Um, so it's really just this, this lower end where there's that parking restriction.
And I'm fine with your recommendations are sensible. And you know, we, we can always go back at this and if it doesn't work, then look at it again. It's just a sign and some paint and, and hopefully um, figuring out the, the entrance to the street, um, what we need to do there and improve that as well.
Others?
I'm just gonna say what I think is probably obvious, but to the resident from number six or eight's suggesting that the, the entrance be, enter this curb cut on Hancock and exit the other, that's on the condo, right? There's nothing we can do on that. That's the obvious. Okay, fair enough. They could take it up with.
Property rights.
Yeah. So otherwise, I'm good with the recommendation.
Yeah, that is probably the property right, is that?
Yeah. It's a good idea, not anything we can do.
All right. Uh, hearing no other discussion, uh, if everyone's okay with the recommendations uh, from the engineering department, we can take a motion up? If you want to make one.
Um, we approve the installation of a no parking here to driveway sign to be posted forty feet from the end of the current parking restriction, um, leaving a clearance of six feet to the two fifty-nine Washington Street driveway opening.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks everyone for your comments. Um, all right, moving on, uh, we have the planning board. DAB, MBTA three A update?
DAB, we need like a seventh inning stretch here or what? This is quite a, are we gonna need a seventh inning stretch? This is quite a presentation.
Um, if I, that's much easier.
You're gonna sing God Bless America? Sweet Caroline?
That's what Caroline.
Sweet Caroline?
Seven inning stretch?
Yes.
You wanna come up here and join us too?
Thank you so much.
Yep, come on up Taylor.
Taylor, I haven't met Taylor. Taylor's our new man, new planner. Nice.
Taylor, our new town planner. Tell if you want to introduce yourself to the board.
Yes, Taylor.
Hey, everyone. How's everyone doing?
Great.
Taylor Herman, new town planner.
Uh, so.
That's John Fallon.
Not the new town planner.
Uh, so thank every, I am having a problem with this mic this evening. Uh, so thanks for making the time for us to come um, before you and talk to you about the MBTA Communities Act. Um, we've got Taylor Herman that you just met, our new town planner. Emily Innis of Innis and Associates is our, uh, one of our two consultants is working with us on this as well as North Main Street um, revisioning and rezoning. Um, and uh, as you probably know by know, we are planning on bringing this to town meeting in the spring. Um, we just had a really great um, in-person public hearing last Tuesday evening. We had like forty or fifty people there. We had a lot, fifty-five. Uh, everyone was poring over maps and putting stickers and asking questions. So that was really exciting and I'm really, I like to thank all those people who I'm sure are watching this because I know that you folks are the popular place in town on Monday evenings. Um, I, I wanna thank them all for showing up. And without any further ado, I want to pass it on to Emily.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure to meet you all tonight. I have a presentation that should uh, normally take about an hour and a half. Um, it's not going to take that tonight.
Yes.
I've been told.
Give short attention spans. Just letting you know.
I've been told to hit the highlights, but I did wanna make sure that you had the entire presentation because I think it answers a lot of questions that may have come up. So I'm going to, to walk you through it.
So Emily, before you jump in, DAB, I just wanna ask, do you have a question? DAB, what are you bringing to town meeting? What's the, what's the ask or what's the deliverable?
We are bringing um, revised zoning for North Main Street plus overlay districts for MBTA three A, which will cover, we believe, um, the current plan. Um, it would be to cover parts of the center business district as well as the southern part of GBD two, which is um, essentially from Swanton up to Clark Street.
So it's a compl- system would be compliant?
It's, it's, we, yeah. I mean, we've been working on the North Main Street portion for several years. And one, as Emily will go into this, when we started looking at how the three A compliance districts would show up, there was an overlap in the southern part of North Main Street. And we really want a sort of a continuous view of what's going, what's happening. You know, we might transition to different types of, you know, density or whatever as we go up to the more residential parts of North Main Street. But the idea is that this really gives us an opportunity to have a integrated view. And so that's what we're bringing.
Thank you.
So um, this is divided into a couple of sections. One, the first is just a general introduction. And so I'm gonna touch on a couple of pieces there. Um, uh, the planning board has actually been working on this for a while. There was an earlier technical assistance with a firm called JM Goldson. So they, they did the first round and then I came in and we're working on the, the second round. So I'll talk a little bit about that. Touch briefly on uh, the community meeting and then talk to you about the next steps. So the MBTA Communities Act, um, I'm hoping that many of you are familiar with it, but not everybody is. Uh, it's uh, quite complex in its execution, but essentially it uh, requires that communities that are designated as MBTA communities um, zone for. And zone for is a key phrase. Uh, multifamily housing, that has to have at least one district. Um, if you have a commuter rail, uh, it has to be with, or other transit station, it has to be within a half mile. And then the two other pieces is it cannot have age restrictions, must be suitable for families and also has to have a minimum density of fifteen um, dwelling units per acre. Uh, it's critically important because Massachusetts is facing housing shortage. It's facing a shortage of housing that is affordable across a wide range of incomes. And it's also now at a disadvantage economically because of the housing prices. So this is the way that the state has chosen, or one of the many ways the state has chosen to address this issue. Um, it's not a mandate to build housing and it's not a housing production target. And that's something that a lot of people tend to get confused. Uh, when you're zoning, you are creating the capacity for something to happen, but the town isn't responsible for building it. And there is no penalty to the town if those units don't appear within a certain amount of time. Um, you're just, your, your responsibility is simply to set the zoning. Um, a couple of other misconceptions, it's not restricted to affordable housing. Uh, there's been a lot of um, uh, misconception about that. Uh, it is, uh, a town can have an affordable requirement, but it's not required to. Um, it's also not a one-size-fits-all and it's not optional. The Attorney General issued guidance in uh, March of this year and said that uh, kind of communities are required to comply. So this is just the map of the districts. You know that you're a commuter rail community and your deadline is December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. Thus going to town meeting. Um, and many people ask about the implications and the primary one, in addition to, from a planner's perspective, the loss of the opportunity to address housing issues in a community. The other key sort of stick is the loss of access to grant funds, three of which are in the legislation itself. Critical one is the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, but additional grant programs were listed by EO HLC. And I mentioned just briefly that MBTA Communities is a tool to address housing, but it's not, by no means is it the only one. one. It primarily addresses moderate income to workforce or market rate housing, depending on the community's choices. There's also not housing production, as I mentioned. Zoning is one component, one component only of producing housing. Market strength, financial feasibility, availability of labor. Certainly, interest rates are playing a large role in the production or lack thereof at the moment. So there's a lot of factors that go into producing housing. And then finally, multifamily housing is defined as a building with three or more residential dwelling units or one or more buildings on a site with one or more units per building. And this is an important definition because I think a lot of people think of multifamily housing as the mid-rise or above on the right-hand side of the screen. And when you think of it as more of the townhouse size, the double-due blocks is on a lot, this idea of missing middle housing, that is a popular planning term right now for addressing the gap between single-family homes and those taller buildings. It's important to understand how that missing middle can fit into communities of different scales, of different existing development patterns. So we have three elements of, that fall into the compliance test that we do. There's a compliance model that is a GIS and Excel-based model that communities have to use to demonstrate their compliance. It's really looking at the land area, the capacity, and the zoning. And I'm not going to go through in each of these in great detail. I'm happy to at any other point. But land area talks about the geographic area that you're designating as your districts. How big is it? Where is it? What does include? Capacity is the number of units that you can produce within that land area. And zoning is when you start to put the two of them together and set development parameters around that. And you can see some of those there. And all three of these work together to demonstrate your compliance. So if you change one, if you move the geography, if you made larger or smaller, that's going to affect your unit capacity. If you change the zoning, that's going to affect your unit capacity. And so you are required to meet a minimum land area of 37 acres. You have to have, 50% of your total district area has to be located in the station area. So if you have more than your minimum land area, there could be good reasons for doing that. 50% of that total must be within the station area. Your minimum contiguous district size based on the minimum land area is 18.5 acres. But in fact, it's actually your percentage of your total district, 50% of it has to be contiguous. So if you had a land area of your final district of 50 acres, your minimum contiguous district size would be 25 acres. And actually, that same number of acres would have to be located in your station area. You have to zone for a minimum capacity of 1,220 units. Same percentage applies. You have to have 50% of your total unit capacity within the station area, which is a half mile from the station. And your minimum density is 15 dwelling units per acre, consistent with everybody else. The interesting piece with the minimum district is, density rather, is if you have different areas, if you have more than one district, you can actually have some areas with a lower density and some with a higher, as long as that averages out to 15 units per acre. And that's important because it allows towns to target the level of density they want for the type of development pattern that they either want to preserve or want to encourage, depending on that community's needs. Zoning, of course, is what somebody can or can't do with the land. And these are some of the, although there's a lot of different things you can do with zoning, these are some of the key things that we look for that fall into the compliance model. So as we talk about iterations of zoning and what can and can't happen, I will be looking to see is this something that is going to affect the compliance model? Or is this something that we can do that will help the town determine the type of multifamily housing development that it wants, but it wouldn't necessarily affect the compliance model? So JM Goldson tested, actually, they went through three scenarios. I'll show the map for the third scenario. They found that it did exceed the requirements for the total minimum land area and the unit capacity, which is great because it gives the town some flexibility. And it provides your compliant districts entirely within the station area. So that is for you terrific because it gives you a lot of different options. You can see here with this map, these colored areas, the different shades are the different districts that JM Goldson tested. And this is where, to Diab's point earlier, the 3A districts start to overlap with the North Main Street corridor. So we are working with Forman Place, who have been working on the North Main Street corridor for quite some time, to make sure that the efforts the town has done in that direction are consistent. And, and we are consistent with those efforts. So there's no worries about one group's going one way and one group's going the other. We have since done some additional tests and we will do more. There were some initial changes. We wanted to check on the Central Business District. You can see some jagged lines, some people who were concerned about how this could affect historic buildings, had asked us to look at some options. So these are close-ups of all of these maps of the different districts that we're looking at. And again, the overlap with the more North Main Street corridor. This is a little bit more technical, but just know there's a couple of different types of land and we're keeping an eye on that because some will affect your unit capacity and some won't. The ultimate result, as we look at the existing zoning and test the districts, is that you're still above your, even with the changes, you're still above your minimum capacity, you're still above your minimum density, and you're still well within the transit station areas. So again, there's some flexibility. We have had some, we're working with the Zoning Review Advisory Committee, ZERAC. They've had some suggestions of some areas to test. We got some more. This is the large map that we used at the community meeting that Diab referred to. So we had some more suggestions of things to look at. So we'll be meeting, I think, ZERAC is meeting this week? Wednesday. And on their own, we, we being Michael from Forman Place and myself, are meeting with them again on the 12th of December. So we'll be discussing whether or not we want to test new districts and how.
Sorry, who comprises the ZERAC?
The ZERAC is a member, is 10 members, eight of them being community members, two of them, one being a member of Historical and one being a member of the Design Review Committee.
And just eight citizens?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the names on the slides. So, so we'll be meeting with them again on December 12th. We'll be starting to talk through whether or not we're revising the models, what the components of the draft overlay district might be. The town's already done some initial work on thinking about that, or the planning board has with the original technical assistance. And then December through January, we'll be doing some additional community outreach as we start to develop the zoning kind of on both sides. This is where the, the two projects, North Main Street Corridor, Corridor is going to be developing their zoning and design guidelines. We'll be doing the same thing for the 3A district, coordinating that through. We expect to have another ZERAC meeting in January to talk over what we've come up with. And then early February, we'll be having the next community meeting to showcase the draft zoning and the implications and have a discussion about that. And that is your hour and a half presentation in a much shorter period of time.
Well, that was well done. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I've got a couple. Maybe one for Taylor, maybe you know this, but Taylor, Diab. So if we, so we have two stops. So we have Wedgemere and we have the center. But just going from the Rotary, what's a half mile from the Rotary heading north? Is that Swanton Street? Where is the cutoff?
Clark Street.
Clark Street.
It's almost exactly a Clark Street.
Dunkin' Donuts, Koko Backings, Clark Street.
Clark Street, yeah.
Okay. And then heading south, it's Wedgemere probably, right? It's Skinfield and there's not much.
It does, yeah.
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 Okay.
It's right at, right at the lake.
Yep. Okay. And then I think you'd mentioned that you were having more meetings around more districts, so potentially shifting south, shifting east or west. Where, the map that you showed, if you consider Wedge Pond, Park View, North Main, you're, you're in excess of your limit by almost 20 acres.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the point of trying to add more acreage when you're already 20 acres over, 37 acres?
So it's an excellent question, and it comes down to a couple of things. One is we might not be adding acres, but shifting acres. Some people had asked, I think the questions that we received, at least since I came on the project, was, somebody asked about what about rezoning the Mahoney's location? Somebody asked, a couple of people asked about Wedgemere. I think there was at least one other location. So the question is, do you shift it or do you add to it? One of the reasons you might want to add is, depending on the parameters you put in, if you add additional acreage, you could potentially drop density in some areas because you're getting more units. But you, you have to be careful with that, right? This is where the geography and the unit capacity and the zoning start to come into play. So it's not, it's not as simple as saying if I change one, it would automatically mean a change to the other. You have to test it out in the model and see what it looks like. So if people want us to test and see what the implications of adding acreage or swapping out acreage is, we're happy to do that. If people say, ah, we've thought about it and we'd like to just go forward with what we have, that's also fine. We're here to assist the town in understanding the implications of making those choices.
Okay. And then my last question, oh, go ahead.
I just want to add a couple of things. So sometimes when you're adding a parcel, it's bigger than you want, but you gotta have the whole parcel.
Yes.
So for instance, Park View is eight acres. We don't need all of Park View, but we need some of it, but we get all of it. So when you look at the map, you're kind of constrained by, this is where the boundary lines are. We take it all or take none of it. So you are over the acreage, but you can't do much about it in that sense. Another reason for increasing the acreage might be that you want to put in more affordable housing. No, sorry. You want to put in more units that, to increase affordability, sorry. This is all a market-driven approach, and I apologize for saying that. The idea is, the more units you build, the market will drive the prices down. That's the entire basis of this. So you may say, maybe we want more units than are required because we want to do that. So that's a policy issue. The other thing that we do have to remember, and Emily pointed this out, is that if you decide to shift things, say, out of, if you want to increase things in some areas, you have to realize that you still need to have 50% of your area within a half mile of the strain station. So depending on how much more of the downtown you want to, say, increase development on, that will constrain how much you want to put outside of it.
Right.
And the other thing I think is really important is that we are able to meet these requirements without changing anything about our dimensional requirements in the CBD. So the, the density that we see in these models are the existing density on the ground. So even without this, somebody could, other than requiring, you know, the buy right, multifamily use, that's, that's the existing density. So we already have high densities in the CBD. It was designed, you know, when we rezoned it, we did that to encourage people to build housing in order to bolster, you know, put it next to transit, put it next to, so this is, you know, we are so lucky because we have this zoning which gives us this and we have the flexibility. So I just want-
So the last question is, are you planning to go to a springtime meeting with all four, I think it was four different areas, by right? Or three, I mean, you're not sure yet, but if, if we were to go with, I get your point, that we're already zoned for that kind of density. So if we're gonna say our MBTA 3A community are these 57 acres, would that be the town meeting motion? Or is it the 38 or 40? It's whatever the math works out to be, but-
Right. So we're still getting input from people. We're going to come up with a number, but it will be, however many zones will be coming in as a package because we, picking and choosing from them at town meeting is-
Oh, absolutely not. I'm just curious if you're trying to overshoot your minimum or meet your minimum.
I think that we're still taking the temperature of the town.
Yep, makes sense.
I think I have enough tease in that sentence. But yeah, I think, you know, there are certainly some of us who wish to see, we, you know, we're looking at the market, we're looking at the fact that we've built over the last, you know, 10 years, maybe 100 new units in town, not counting the, the 40Bs. We're looking at a really constrained housing market in town. And so the question is, do we want to open it up? How much do we want to open it up? How much is the community interested in doing that? And that's what we're getting from the ZERAC, who are a great bunch of people, and what we're getting from the public outreach. So that question is still up. The policy question is still up there.
Diab, can I just go back to one of the statements you just made a couple minutes ago from a policy decision standpoint? So the idea here is to, if you build density, building more units, it's going to be a market rate adjustment when you drive prices down?
The idea is that this is supposed to really produce market rate units. That the state has actually capped how much DEDed affordable units you can put in there. They said you can't put more than 10% unless you come with a economic feasibility analysis showing that the extra, you can go up to 20, I believe, showing that the extra amount will not impede housing. So the state is not creating affordable housing. They are creating this incentive for people to build market rate homes and just the total number of homes will drive prices down. This is a market-based solution. So.
Drive prices down throughout the town or-
Throughout the region. There are 160-some communities which are affected by this. They're all pretty much in the metro Boston area. We are affected by housing prices across, you know, everywhere, you know? So, you know, you look at the housing prices in Arlington, they've gone through the roof in the last 10 years, which is, you know, not quite as high as Winchester. But, you know, I never, when I first moved here 30 years ago, the thought of the prices in Arlington being where they are now is, was just incomprehensible.
So if I'm somebody new to town and I pay $1.5 million for a home?
Yep.
And now we build all these units and suddenly my home's worth only a million.
Different market product.
It's, it's the people-
Single-family home versus multifamily.
If you're buying a 1.5 million, single-family home, you're building out a lot. You've got parking, you've got a backyard, you can put a pool in, you can, you know, do all of those things. These are going to be denser units, so they're going to be probably smaller units. They're really aimed at another demographic. This is the demographic of, of, you know, people who don't have kids, who either are, you know, between 25 and 35. We have this hole in housing in town where we don't have that population. If you look at Winchester's population, it's, you know, it goes high, you know, up to like 20 or so, and then it dips way down until you get to the, the population of people with families. And then it stays up, all the way up to the seniors. And we just don't have the housing for the people in the middle. And these are, these are the people who would come into town who probably don't want a car because cars expensive. If they can live next to transit, that's great. They're not going to have kids yet, so there are actually net positive impacts for the, for the taxes on this town. And it also provides places for empty nesters to move because they can stay in town now at a place they can afford because these will be cheaper. They won't have to worry about taking care of their, you know, there's a whole, I could go on for hours, I apologize. But there's a demographic which isn't served by existing housing. I do not foresee that the people buying one and a half million-dollar homes are going to lose value. Because let's be honest, the reason why the house prices are so high is two things. One is lack of new housing and it's the schools. The, if you want to drive pricing of houses down in Winchester, just stop supporting the schools. And within a decade, I assure you, the housing prices will go way down. So I don't see that this is really going to affect, you know, the people out in the single-family land, which is most of town. By, you know, it's the majority of town. So.
So Diab, are we unable to increase inclusionary zoning requirements in, as part of this? Or incent, are we able to incentivize it or?
We can, we, we can go up to 20%.
20%, okay.
If we do an economic feasibility analysis, which is in the works, we actually have hooked up, the state is actually going to provide technical assistance on that, and we've signed up with that. So that is, that's going forth. So at the very least, we want to match what we can, what we're doing currently in the CBD, which is 10% if you're six and above, and 15% if you're, I think, 25 and above. You can provide incentives if you want.
Yeah.
I mean, there, all of those tools are available to this. All this really says is you have to allow multifamily by right. You can do all sorts of things on top of that. So for instance, we decided that we would exclude a lot of the main commercial corridors in the Center Business District because there's this question of, if you allow it multifamily by right and someone comes in and says, I'm gonna buy that lot and put in residential units because it's obviously worth a lot more money if I do so, you're gonna lose that first floor commercial because they don't have to put it in if it's by right. So what we did is we excluded big chunks of the commercial area so they would remain with the current zoning. Other towns have said, we're not going to do that, but we will give you an incentive to put commercial on the first floor. So they could say, put commercial on the first floor and we'll allow you to put in more units. Or we'll give you a height benefit so you can put in more units. So a lot of towns can do it different ways. We are really lucky in that we don't, we can make that choice if we want to, but we're not forced to make that choice. So. And, and that's one of the, the reworkings of the map into the Center Business District has been, you know, the reworkings of the map into Center Business District has been, you know, a lot of people are concerned about the historic structures. How do we protect them? We already have protections in our zoning right now. We're asking people who are concerned, how do we want to work with that? Are there things we need to do differently in order to protect that? How do we, you know, we want to, we, I, I believe in adaptive reuse of historic structures. If that's a possibility, what are, what are the guardrails? So, those are all, those are ongoing conversations. So-
Are other communities that have passed this zoning already, are they incentivizing affordable housing? Are they doing this market analysis, or is that more of kind of a fringe piece of it?
There's a lot of communities doing the, the EFA now, the Economic Feasibility Analysis. One of my, he's not on this project with me, but I work very closely with another firm called RKG Associates. And RKG Associates do a lot of EFAs, so are in the middle, they're in the middle of doing that now. We've, we've partnered on a, on a bunch of the, in fact, you'll have seen their logo up there, because we've been partnering on some of these things. The communities that have to pass, there's, the rapid transit communities have to pass their zoning by this December 31st, to keep in compliance. And so, they're in the process of doing that. I don't know how many of them have done EFAs. I could check into that. So, let's see.
Yeah, Lexington, Lexington did one.
Lexington did, did EFA, yeah.
Because I think they're actually gonna have up to 20%.
Yeah.
And they passed, they were able-
They've, they've passed their zoning. I have not yet heard whether or not HLC has approved it.
Okay.
So, I'm, they may, they may have. I just haven't heard it. So-
But, but their economic feasibility analysis says they could do up to 20%.
Yeah.
I think it was 80% AMI, which is a lot lower than what we've got for our extra 5%. I think we're up to 120. So, it's actually that the units are worth more in a sense. But, they show that they don't have an issue meeting that. So, if we wanted to, I don't think we have any issues in, in going to the 15% that we do now. So, but, yeah, there are a number of communities. Milton has just done an economic analysis, a much deeper one, about whether or not, if you built it out, what would be the total cost to the town. And it, and it shows that if you factor in all the economics, it's actually a net gain to the town, if you completely built it out. And no one expects us to be completely built out. Because, you know, zoning happened, you know, you changed the zoning, and, you know, if you build it, you, you hope they come, but it doesn't, I mean, I should say, if you zone it, you hope they come, but-
If you zone it, you hope they build.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
And these, sorry, just one more question. These are expected to be for families, though? I mean, that's, I mean, I know that, that-
You, you cannot prohibit-
Right. Okay.
So, you, what you can't do in your zoning is say, you can only have X number of bedrooms.
Right.
Right.
What, yeah, I mean-
Or, or you can't, you can't define the unit mix. In fact, I just ran across a community that does do that, so I had to tell them that they can't do that anymore. You can't have it be age-restricted. You can't, you can't limit the size of the units, as well as the number of the bedrooms. So, there's a whole list of things that you can't do.
Okay.
Again, in the, the interests of making it suitable for families.
We are thinking that just the kind of market forces may have, you know, it may not work out for families to be moving into these units, but it's certainly plausible, like, I mean, it's, it's something that we would encourage, I mean-
It's, it's really plausible, but, you know, I mean, there are constraints on what, you know, for instance, in the Center Business District, it's .75 parking spaces per unit. So, you're, you're really focusing on a population which doesn't have cars. So, you may have smaller apartments there, just because you won't have large families, because of the parking. So, it's up to the market to make those decisions. We don't make those decisions. We just say, here's the density we, that you can have, and that's, that's, everything else is the market.
Anyone else?
Are you planning to bring the North Main Street zoning to Springtown meeting as well, or?
Yes.
Guys are animals. It's a lot to be going for Springtown meeting all at once, right?
At a fifth night.
Yeah, or sixth, you know, sorry.
Patty book six nights.
So, and I, as I understand it, you know, we're setting up that the zoning is by right, but, and, and that's sort of encouraging the building, but what are our expectations about timelines for sort of changes to this area? And this is maybe also like, not, it could be a Winchester-specific question, but it could also be sort of just like a big state policy question about sort of what, what would that look like, once these are in effect?
For the MBTA communities, since you've got two sets of zoning, I'll, I'll answer the one. The timeline's an interesting question, because we're in a period of rising interest rates at the moment. So, that's likely to put a damper on immediate construction in pretty much all of the communities, I would say. Again, your zoning. So, whether or not you get any construction of units in your community depends on all of those other factors, including, you know, what is your overall sort of, you know, how friendly are you to people coming in even as of right? How, how does your building permit application process work? If you do decide to do site plan review, how is that structured versus other communities? When you think of the number of developers in Massachusetts, and the projects that they're already doing for a community that wants to support housing, you know, they're in competition with other communities that want to support housing. So, making your overall process as streamlined as possible is one way to attract the type of development that you want. Another way is clarity in the zoning in terms of things like what development standards you have. If you do design guidelines, certainly on the development standards, they, they have to be measurable, quantifiable, specific. But also on the design guidelines, you're looking for a process that is as smooth for all, you know, if you choose to do design guidelines, which this community is looking at, you're looking for a process that's as smooth as possible for all the parties concerned, in order to produce housing that you want to produce. And that's one of the reasons for doing this as a planning process, as opposed to saying, okay, we're just gonna write zoning and comply, and we'll be done, is your, you know, a community that is trying to address housing needs, needs to be smart about how they integrate their other plan, their, their master plan, their housing production plan, how they think about how this zoning can help them achieve their other goals around housing. That's critical.
All right. Well, thank you all for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Very interesting. Thanks.
All right. Next up, we have capital planning update.
So, not too much to share since town meeting closed, but I did include in the packet the list of the projects that were approved, approved at town meeting for engineering studies or design, as well as construction. There's obviously a lot to get working on from the staff's perspective, in addition to the projects we already have ongoing. We are working right now to execute contracts for the, the roof work. I did want to note for the town hall library windows, we actually have to issue an RFP, so that process a little, is a little bit more time-consuming to be able to select a design consultant to do that work. We will be issuing the RFP in December, and we hope to have somebody on board in, in January. I don't know if there's any specific questions that the board has. Mark Tug, the Assistant Town Manager, and Michelle and John and I are meeting tomorrow to kind of do a little bit of a brainstorming, you know, as we kind of move into the next capital planning phase headed into the spring.
Lot of work.
Yep. This chart was really helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Sure.
Any questions for Beth at this point, on that? So, we're gonna keep rolling along with this and keep having it on the agenda-
You got it.
Moving forward, as, as we can, as things develop. So, I know Michelle and John are gonna take the lead on this. Thank you. But, we'll kind of lay out, you know, as a result of town meeting, what you see here, and then where we kind of go on a path as we keep moving. ARPA funding discussion? So, there's a couple of things here, I think, right?
Right. So, first, we have a few projects that came in below what the original estimate was. So, for a total of almost $87,000 to rescind, four different projects. And then, with the new tree truck that came in, our DPW needs to make a modification to the garage door to fit the new truck within the bay. So, they're asking for separately, an appropriation of $7,000 to assist with that. So, there was some money that was given back as a result, from the, from the original approval for the, for the tree truck.
And we need to make two different votes, right?
Yes.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
The first vote would be to rescind the money.
Right.
We put that back in the pot.
Yep.
And there's a DPW request for the 7,000. Is there anything else for ARPA tonight?
I think that's all we have for this evening.
Okay. And I know, Dea, you were gonna work on this whole community grant application that we set aside, the $300,000, you know, for people probably should get, after the new year, get rolling on that.
Yep. I've talked about that with Stacy initially, when we first mentioned it, just in terms of how, a little bit of how it could be structured and, and what it could be used for. But, maybe we can try to get that, try to get that stood up, January.
Okay. So, any, first, any questions on rescinding the money? Should be an easy one.
I think it's funny that we have $10.
Every penny counts.
I put the $24.80. Get the 80 cents.
Exactly. I thought I was looking at it wrong. I was like, wait, what?
$10 will buy us a couple of-
So, if there's no further discussion on that part, if we can rescind the money, if anyone wants to make a motion.
Um, move that we rescind the remaining balances of the ARPA fund allocations voted on March 28th, 2022 for the Arbor, Arbor Wendell Pump Station, in the amount of $52,827.99 for, from July 18th, 2022, for the Leonard Field Master Plan of $10, for March 27th, 2023, for the Playground Safety Study of $24.80, and June 5th, 2023, for the DPW tree truck for $34,132.70.
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? That passes. So, then, we've got a DPW request to outfit the garage door to fit the new truck, for $7,000. Anyone have any issue with that? Discussion? Somebody want to make a motion on that?
Move that the board allocate $7,000 from ARPA funds to the DPW to modify the garage door to fit the new tree truck.
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? That passes. And I think there was a memo, I think in our, Beth, if you want, from capital planning.
Correct.
So, this was the, it was Article 5, if I remember correctly, for town meeting. So, this was the one engineering study that did not get funded at town meeting. You have a request from capital, and also a memo from Matt Schuman. So, I think capital planning and staff are looking to us to see if we would, you know, spend ARPA money to fund this study, as you heard at town meeting, what it was gonna be used for. So, is there any thoughts on that?
So, we could potentially spend 300 for 10 to 15 years, or spend 100 for 75 years. That's what was in the memo.
No, so-
A million for 75 years, right?
The million is today's price. So, by the time we would go to construction and nuke.
300 is today's price, too. So, they're both-
Right. It just, that'll go a little bit quicker than the-
Agreed.
The full reconstruction, right?
Is the 100,000 for design, investigation, so forth, is that just for assessing what we have there, and drawing plans of what we have there, and a plan to mitigate what's wrong there? And how much more would it cost to get, because what I'm trying to understand is-
Yeah.
To, to compare one to the other.
Sure.
If a million dollars maybe comes in better than we expect, and we're like, huh, it's 900,000, this turns out to be more than we expect, and the delta's not that great, then maybe we go for the 75-year option, and not the 10 to 15-year option.
So, so, I'll just, because this was started while I was the town engineer, this had been on my list for years to have it inspected. It's not, it's not a, the state only inspects bridges that are over 20-foot span. So, this is, they don't inspect culverts. And so, at the end of FY '23, we had some money in the engineering budget, and we were able to, to get this done. And so, they gave basically two options. One was the repair scenario, which, as you said, is somewhere around 300, 310,000, which they recommend that we do as soon as we can. They said, if we don't, if we can't do those repairs within the next two to three years, they recommend a full replacement, because it will deteriorate to the point that it doesn't make sense to repair. And that, the cost for that was 900, all in engineering and design, engineering and construction, was around 900,000. But, that's in today's, today's dollars. So, the engineering costs, the 100,000 that we asked for at town meeting is a little bit more than the engineering cost would be just for the design, right? We always want to give ourselves a little bit of buffer, because you, especially when we're going to town meeting, you know, some things, things come up. And so, just because the original bridge inspection was, you know, it's a couple days out in the field, doing some TV camera inspection, we, we bumped that number up a little bit, so that if, if they got into the design phase, and we found something that we were like, okay, this isn't what we expected, and we really need to replace it, we want us to make sure that we would have enough money to pivot. So, if we go with the straight repairs, it's, you know, it's probably on the order of 50 to 60,000 for engineering fees to do those repair work. So, the 100,000 number that you, that you heard was, was kind of, at town meeting, was giving us enough buffer that if we needed to kind of change direction and go to a larger design project, we could do that. That being said, if we stayed with the repair, then we can use, we can use whatever money is left over to put towards construction admin services. So, it's not like it's money that we would be lost. That hopefully explains the thinking a little bit.
And we could use ARPA for this?
We can use ARPA for this. Yep.
What are you thinking, John? I mean, you were, had mentioned the issue of the million-
It's just that, you know, if you spend 900,000, and you can solve the problem for 75 years, or you spend 300,000, and you solve it for 10 to 15 years, you should spend the 900,000 and solve it for 75 years.
But I think, isn't this, this engineering is gonna lead us down that path?
This engineering will, assuming we don't find anything unexpected, this engineering will lead us to the path of repair. I think, you know, part of the concern is just looking at the overall capital picture in the next few years. Fitting in another million-dollar-plus project was just a question mark in our minds, for whether we can do that.
It just was, wherever you can take something off the board for 75 years, I think that's attractive.
True.
That's all. Maybe we go down this road for, spend 40, 50,000. You're out after that.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard not to solve the problem, right? Just to-
Oh, no, no, I wasn't saying not solve it. I was just like-
No, 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 I know. I'm just saying, I get where your, what your frustration is, right? Because there, there is a, a solution here, but it, it could be that that's, that money solves the problem, three other problems for 15 years. You know, that's, that's what we're, we're up against, I think. You know, I don't know.
I think we are up against it, right? By looking at that list, and, you know, just the, just the stuff for, for funding. I mean, this isn't the only bridge, right? I mean, Shore Road, you know, as well, and so-
And I don't really get the sense that town meeting was opposed to this project necessarily as much as there was just a general level of discomfort and, you know, with familiarity with the project, and all of that. So, I mean, us going ahead at this stage, I don't think would be, you know, offensive to town meeting from a policy perspective either. I think it's necessary to move forward. We don't want to get to the point with, where we were with the Lake Street Bridge, where, you know, we figured we had a few years, and all of a sudden, the state said, no, sorry, this is, has to be done, like, immediately. And then we've got to scramble. So-
So, just talking it through, if we, if we don't fund the engineering with ARPA funds, we'll be back in this, in the capital cycle next June with the same request for engineering funds, which will then push construction out an additional year.
Yep. Anyone else?
I'm a little torn on this one, because I'm not, and I think it's the same way I felt at town meeting. It's, the argument is, it's old, and we don't know what's wrong with it, because we don't have drawings. And then, other things are like, here's a fall- And then other things are like, here's a falling down retaining wall, and here's a hole in a bridge, and, you know, on Shore Road, like, here's all this picture deterioration. And Everdav sounds like we think there's something wrong there, so, um, I'm not saying I won't vote for it, but I'm just, I don't.
I mean, we have an inspection. We have an inspection, right, that we have a, I have a report right here that was done in July, so they did identify issues. There's not a question of whether there's issues, there are identified issues that need to be addressed. The, the fact that there's not plans doesn't change the the, you know, they went out, they physically inspected it, the concrete's in poor condition, the, the guardrail is obviously substandard. So there's, there's obvious issues that need to be addressed.
And you said this was on your list for several years?
Yeah, so in the engineering department, obviously, you know, we, kind of the bridges are the, the big thing, and then there's obviously these smaller kind of culverts that, um, don't always get to add it to the top of the list, because we've redone almost every bridge and done over the past ten years. So this was one that, again, had been on my list for a few years of wanting to get out and do this inspection, um, and we were finally able to get it done in, at the end of FY twenty-three.
So we have, VHB are an engineering firm telling us that the bridge is in need of repairs, at least deficiencies here. We also have our own engineering department saying, we don't really know much history about this bridge. So the question, and I get your point, um, is what do we do about it? You know, we have this list of, you know, tens of millions of dollars of capital needs. You know, but we also have, you know, as Mike says, you know, you don't want this to sneak up for you, to you, and then you're kinda scrambling. So what do we, what do we do? You know? In my opinion, I defer, you know, I'm not an engineer, I defer to the staff on this, and if they think it's mission critical to bring it forward in the capital cycle, and they're gonna bring it again next year, I think, you know, if we see construction costs rising, we gotta get this stuff at least queued up so we know what we need to do and how much it's gonna cost. I think this is, you know, just another one on the list. That's a safety, public safety issue, that's a priority, so. I would fund it, but that's.
Yeah, if we're saying it's a, um, public safety and health issue and it's a priority, um, then, you know, I mean, that, that's what we should be spending capital funds on, so, um, if, um, so if that's, if that's how we're identifying this as a, um, public safety priority, then, um, you know, it seems like we would have to fund the engineering.
So how is this gonna get funded at town meeting? Capital stabilization fund?
It, for the construction work, yeah.
So had this passed, it wouldn't have come out of ARPA. So I'm just curious, is there a way to get that money transferred back into ARPA? If capital had it, right, they had the hundred thousand dollars in town meeting, voted to not spend it, and we vote to spend it to accelerate that it gets done? Could we get the hundred thousand dollars back from capital? Versus waiting till May and then they spend their hundred thousand then?
I mean, we can't transfer money between the two funds.
We can't.
No.
Okay.
So your options are waiting till the next capital cycle and being in the same position next fall.
Yep.
And seeing what's on that list with everything else we know percolating, uh, or, you know, use ARPA funding. There's no other, I mean, is there any other funding source? Identifiable?
No, not for, not, uh, and from an operational standpoint, there's, we couldn't cover that.
I don't have it in your budget.
We don't have it in the budget.
Do we have an understanding of, um, from the initial inspection? Are, um, repairs, so it's a culvert, so it's we were talking about the Cross Street Bridge, things are having under. For repairs, would that be sort of less intrusive to the roadway, like things would be under, or would that still, um, cause road closures and sort of taking that, that part of the road offline, uh, compared to sort of full replacement?
So, a full replacement would require us, like Lake Street Bridge, to shut the road down, cut it out, put a new precast structure in. Repairs, we would be able to keep. I think we'd probably be able to keep during most of the work, two-way traffic at some point, probably one-way traffic, because they're recommending the, um, VHB recommends the upstream concrete sidewalk coping and railing should be reconstructed to current standards, so that, um, upstream railing and that work, they probably have to restrict the lane and during some period of time to, um, be able to do that work, but, um, some of it will, you know, be underground as well.
Thoughts? Anyone else?
I mean, you know, my only issue is, you know, we, we have a lot of these capital requests and we've identified them as health and safety risks. We're prioritizing them. I just don't know when we're looking at, you know, a brick that fall off the clock tower, what level of priority that is for us? Is that a, you know, the highest level of priority, a ten? Is this a nine? Is there, you know, something else that's a five? I, I just, I have a, a difficulty comparing and prioritizing the projects. That, you know, that, that's it. So I, I don't know with this one. I mean, if, if, if we're saying that this is a high priority public and health safety risk, then I don't know how we, we don't fund it moving forward. But if we're saying it's less than that, then how much less is it? If ten's the highest, is it an eight? Is it, you know, so that, that's, um, right, and, and.
Do you have any indication where engineering ranked this project in their capital requests?
I don't know off the top of my head. Usually, in my experience with capital, the bridge projects rank very high. You know, catastrophic if we have to close a bridge in an emergency situation or even raid a bridge because, you know, a a via, like a fire truck is too heavy to go, we've kind of had those experiences with Lake Street where we had to prove to the state that we didn't have to raid the bridge, which meant that, like, you know, heavy vehicles couldn't drive over it, so.
But even when we compare those, right, between this culvert project and the Lake Street Bridge, Lake Street Bridge is a ten.
It's, yeah, right, that's obviously.
Is this, is this a, a nine? Is this an eight? I, that's what I, I don't know, and.
I think what we don't want is to, and, I mean, I just, again, putting my engineering hat on, what we've always tried to avoid is an emergency situation where you knew there was a problem and you weren't able to fix it in time and it led to a closure, which then you have to, under an emergency situation, do engineering and bid a project in a condensed timeframe with, uh, you know, reserve fund transfers or whatever else to get the money to be able to do it. So we've, we've always tried to kinda just give ourselves enough time and planning to be able to do things in a timely manner where we don't end up with those sort of emergency repair situations. On a bridge, I mean, obviously, it happens in buildings from time to time, but, um, from a roadway infrastructure project, that's kind of been our goal.
I'm gonna make a comment. I think it would be really helpful when, uh, if we sort of go back to like a picture is worth a thousand words, right? Like, when I did the playground, the presentation about the playgrounds, I overloaded that with imagery, because if you know the playgrounds, if you know those playgrounds, you know the need. If you don't know them, you might hear words and say, oh, okay, it's bad, right? So I just looked at the culvert and I looked at the railing. And I think like, if people see that railing and are told that's, that's not, if people hear, oh, the railing's not up, the guardrail's not up to, to code or whatever. Okay, sure, the guardrail's not, if you look at the guardrail, it's like, not two-by-fours, but slightly bigger than a two-by-four. And if your, your car hit that, your car is in, in the water without, you know, there's, there's maybe a second delay. But so I think that having the pictures really do help illustrate where the need is, and I that's a guardrail, right? So like, I, I just, I just think it would be helpful overall and helpful in coming to town meeting with requests that like, sort of known visual issues can sort of just add to, this is a need, this is a concern, and you know, looking at that, like, take that, take that curve slow, like, you know, understanding exactly what that means to say, the guardrail needs to be replaced versus like, the guardrail is, is made of boards. Just all to add, I think it's valuable that, that we would, you know, provide the, the funding so that we can get that fixed.
And the guardrail, it, it, it's, so, maybe it's kind of a secondary issue, um, or.
I mean, they didn't like prioritize.
Right.
You know, repairs, it's.
It is a secondary issue according to the report.
Yeah, okay.
Everything's below decks, if you will, that the issues are.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I mean, my concern is, you know, what Beth mentioned is the rating of it, you know, we run Sanders over it in the winter, we run fire trucks over it, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not Lake Street, it's not that heavy volume, but we do have heavy trucks that go over it, and, you know, it is a residential road that, you know, is, I mean, it's used, I mean, it's, so. Well, like I said, I'm not an engineer. I rely on, you know, engineering. When engineering comes to you with a request like this, at least in my opinion, and capital, you know, as well, then, you know, I tend to listen to it. I, you know, I was kinda surprised town meeting didn't, and, you know, I don't, you know, I think kind of, it kinda got off the rails a little bit in the conversation, uh, on other issues, and I can certainly appreciate those concerns, but, you know, I think this is a project that, you know, is right up there. If you're gonna fund Shore Road, for example, I'm not sure why you're not funding this as well.
Isn't this about the time you say, do I have a motion, right?
Anybody can make a motion anytime. So if you have a motion, go ahead and make it. I, I'll just keep see, you know, filling time.
No, 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 please, you gotta know.
I can't make motions.
I know you can't.
So.
We thought we approved up to a hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funds for, um, the engineering for the Everdav culvert.
Second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed?
Shall suppose.
Fincom hat on, take that thing off.
So I just wanna be clear that, um, unless we find something unexpected, the plan is to move forward with the repair work. But are we all on the same page?
Right, that's what I, that's what I understood the vote being, yeah, I think you clarified that before, so.
And if we find something in the course of the engineering that changes that, you know, um, decision, then I'll come back to the board and let you know.
Do we know, do you have any sense of if they do find something like that, you know, what additional monies they would need for engineering?
Um, I think the engineering estimate for the full replacement was for twenty-five percent engineering, it was, um, hundred and thirty-three thousand. So, that would be a start.
Well, it's for the full replacement, that's not for the repairs, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Your question, does this exclude the scope for the repairs?
No, I'm saying if they found an issue that led to them to have to pivot to, you know, you know, you need to replace this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe they can look at that first.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll be pretty, you know, I don't think there's a lot more field work to be done, but I think it'll be pretty obvious as they get into the early stages here. There's something unexpected that, that, you know, they didn't find in the original inspection.
I, I guess that's a policy decision. If you guys think that the, you know, it'd be better to do a replacement, we can.
I think we should have a discussion.
I, I need to know that, like, now, because it's a different design.
Right.
Right? So if we are.
So exploratory works over, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so I mean, we did the, the original field inspection and it did, they did a TV camera, they did a visual inspection and, you know.
And that they could see a lot with the, I, I, I read the report and it said, well, you know, we could only, the water was up high, we couldn't see that much, so.
It's not, they, I mean, they were able to, again, once they.
So what are they, so I, I guess what are we gonna get for sixty thousand dollars?
You're gonna get a set of plans and specifications that we will bid.
Okay, so.
Bid documents.
Repair, for repair.
For repair.
So then, where's the part, we, they get into it more, they find out it needs to be replaced? I'm confused.
Right, so I, I think.
Now?
That, right, so unless, in these very early stages, they, they go out there and they say, in the past three months, there's been a catastrophic change in condition.
Okay, so if there hasn't, so barring that, then we're, we're going in the replacement.
We are based on the repair.
Repair, I'm sorry.
Right, I mean, if, if the consensus of the board right now is that you would rather have a replacement project, that's the direction I need right now, because that's a different engineering design project, but.
That's a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars if you wanna do a replacement project.
No.
Still no.
Right, exactly.
I would be no there.
So I did, I, again, I just wanted to be very clear.
The consensus of the board is to continue on with the repair.
Repair, okay. Great.
Just thought I'd ask.
Yes.
Okay. So, next up, just quickly, budget summit meeting dates. So last year, we had that budget summit on a Saturday, um, you know, just kinda started that process. We've done these different ways over different years. And I thought, I don't know, Beth, if you have any ideas about this year, you know, there was a date discussed throughout, it was Friday morning in January, if we wanted to kinda do that. Saturdays aren't good for people, um, what do people think? But the idea is to kinda get everyone together early on and kinda hear some of the same data points.
Yeah.
And have, you know, a dialogue.
So who would, who would be invited? Um, schools, school committee chair, FinCom chair, us?
Capital usually, I think this capital, I can't remember who was here last time. Yeah, it's definitely schools, definitely FinCom.
Okay.
Staff. Stacy was here. I can't remember if anyone else.
And we've got, sorry, I'm just losing my voice. We've got a little bit of time, but do we have a packet of information? Like, we can take this up in December, but, you know, here's the agenda, here's what everybody gets, here are the goals, right, we're gonna work through to something.
I think right now is to kinda pick the date and then kinda work backwards.
Sure, yeah, let's pick a date.
Staff starting, I mean, I think you had some information in your memo.
Yeah, so our municipal budgets are due December first, and then we have a meeting with every department um, the first two weeks of December, so the week of the fourth and the eleventh, and then we kinda take that information in, try to understand it, um, try to, you know, produce things as we can before we kinda plug it into the budget model and get some ideas as to where we are. We obviously also have to make some assumptions on the revenue side, which was part of the conversation that we had last year in terms of how conservative or not conservative we wanted to be in those assumptions. So there's a, you know, and then we, the idea is that I would have a pack of information similar to what we did, um, at last year's meeting where it would kinda have some trade-offs for things that we might wanna, you know, cost, considering what the costs are, do we wanna keep these in, do we wanna take them out, that type of thing. Uh, and, and obviously, if there's any policy directives from the board and things that you'd like to have included in the budget.
So does that date Beth proposed? Is that a decent date? You wanna do it on a Friday or another Saturday?
I would prefer, um, a Saturday or, or Friday afternoon, but I know, then, I don't know how that, that works in other people's schedules.
Thoughts?
Friday morning's good. Saturday morning would, would have to be plan B.
And what date did you say?
Uh, January fifth, it's the first.
Oh, okay.
First Friday in January.
Yes, okay.
I know there was concern previously about Wind Cam, so if Wind Cam was not available on a Saturday, then.
Yeah, I mean, we do it from nine to eleven on that day. When, we, hopefully we can get someone from Wind Cam here. Or at least set us, give us a camera. Kinda go from there.
Yeah, as long as we can get all the information that we need, you know, cause of, of the holidays and that being a short week. as long as we can get everything for, for a Friday circulated.
So we could talk more about this in December, but what, I mean, what kind of information are we expecting? I mean, last year we had kind of projections, preliminary budget information, looking at deficits, how we stacked up the year before, that kind of stuff. What are we, I guess, maybe for our, our next meeting, we can figure out what information we're, we're looking for. So if you have specific items, like I would just ask you to work with the town manager's office and.
Do we expect schools to come with, with an ask, like schools says we want 3.2%? Does that come up in this meeting? Does that come later?
Um, so their budget is, they usually finalize their budget. They finalize their budget January 31st. In my experience in the past few years, it's been pretty fluid until we get up to that date. And that obviously is the challenge because, um, that.
And then you do it on the 15th.
Yeah.
Did we invite them? Have we invited them to attend? Did we make them to participate last year or would we change it such that they're, like at the table or?
So the first year that I was, um, the first budget I did, we had a series of like a few meetings with select board, school committee, finance committee, there were like Zoom meetings. And I think last year we tried to go to a more kind of like workshop approach as opposed to the Zoom meeting. And, and the idea was this would be kind of similar, but maybe, I think, bringing people to the table. Whereas last year was, they were kind of more in the audience.
We can, we can figure this out in December. I'm just curious, how much of the, how much, how much are we telling? How much are we hearing? And I know you need direction, so I'm just trying, but we can take that up on December 11th. Or we, I can take it offline with you, Beth. Because if we're setting expectations for schools, this is the revenue picture, this is the growth, this is what we think we can afford. There's something that we're in, that we're in the telling kind of business or expectation setting versus on the receiving end.
Not reacting, yeah.
Yeah, so, but we can punt that for a couple of weeks. Those are my questions anyway.
I think that was our approach last year.
Okay. I just didn't watch your meeting.
Good idea. All right, so we'll plan for that January 5th. Run that, you can maybe push that out to the chairs of those committees.
Sure.
Superintendent and Stacy. Last year we started with our auditors to give us kind of like a financial overview. I don't know if we need to do that this year, but that's kind of how we started the meeting last year.
We were also in the middle of the Moody's rating review last year, so that kind of played into it as well.
All right, um, next up is just the water field lot, so we need to extend the due diligence period. Uh, we continue to make progress as we watched our meeting last week. There was, uh, some design changes, they're still in the permitting phase, so they're looking to extend the due diligence to January 16th, I believe.
Correct.
Uh, everyone have a chance to look at this agreement? Any questions or discussion on it? Right, hearing none, is there a motion?
Um, would that we approve the amendment to the LDA to extend the due diligence to January 16th and authorize the town manager to sign on the town spot?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If that passes, um, all right, just continue to put on the CPA working group update on the agenda. Is there anything anti or?
No, we're, we're, we're reaching out, um, to members to bring everybody together and we'll probably, I'm guessing, issue the formal study report in mid-January. I mean, I think it's trying to get thing, the conversation going with town meeting members going into spring town meeting, so.
Okay. Um, I think that just leaves the consent agenda.
Would that we approve the consent agenda for Monday, November 27th, 2023?
No, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes.
Move.
Supplement to.
Move that we approve the supplemental consent agenda for Monday, November 27th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. That's everything, right?
I think so.
No one left for public comment? I think we.
I have a question with Beth.
Sure.
Beth, the improvements to the road going around between, went to Pond?
Yes.
Like, I avoid that. Must be like the, I can't be the only one. Is that too severe? It's just making a right turn coming from the tennis courts. You just almost can't make a right turn without smashing into the other car. And I'm like, this doesn't seem like it functions very well.
Yeah, I mean, we've heard some concerns from residents. I've also gotten a lot of people who are happy with it because it has slowed cars down. Um, we've worked with the fire chief to kind of run his trucks through and, you know, he's comfortable with it, so.
With traffic in the other lane?
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, you know, when, when Tool designed it, they designed it for the everyday condition, right? Which is not to have a fire truck turning through there all the time.
But making a right-hand turn there is definitely, I, I, is a challenge as we hire them to do improvements in that whole area. If we get a litany of those things spread all over the place, people will tear their hair out.
So we've definitely had that conversation, right? I mean, they were here last week. Um, and we've had that conversation as we've looked at these other intersections to say, you know, that feels to some people like it's a little bit.
It's far more than, for example, if you were now by Lincoln.
Sure.
And, and the changes there.
Yeah.
That was, that was a significant change, but it's not as severe as.
Sure, so I think Erica mentioned last week that, um, in some of the places where they are proposing bump outs, that they're going to put out barrels or cones to, so that we can make sure that people and have, you know, have a fire truck come out and, and run their equipment through and make sure everybody's comfortable with what's, what's proposed. It's, it's a balance, right, between slowing people down and designing something that people don't feel uncomfortable turning in a regular, um, situation, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
And I think that we intended with that project to really slow people down to, you know, almost a stop to make that turn um, based on the, on coming traffic from the other direction. So I think it's been effective. I think part of the problem is it feels so severe because the intersection was designed in such a crazy, or wasn't designed, in such a crazy way to begin with. So, you know, we have a lot of these kind of legacy, you know, roads and intersections that are really wide and, and really just beg for high speeds and, and people coming around the turn from both directions and using Woodside Road as a cut-through is, you know, it was enough of a problem that I think that it, it, it feels like a big change and it is a big change, but I've heard less complaints about it now that people are getting used to.
Yeah, I, I think it actually just was designed to be determined for using Woodside Road, right? Because it's, it just is.
Yeah, yeah, and we're, you know, when the Lynch project is done, I mean, that school is going to be bigger as well and, and there's going to be a lot more traffic, you know, going there than there, there had been, so. So we'll see. Awesome.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Wincam. Have a good night.